Well, must be traffic. A lot of traffic out there. All right. All right, go ahead. The Tuesday, November 17th, 2015, City of Riverbank Planning Commission meeting will come to order. Roll call, please. Chair Hughes.
Here.
Commissioner McKinney.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
And Commissioner Bill Bedouin.
Here.
Conflict of interest: any planning commission authority member and staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered are to declare their conflict. Are there any conflicts? Public comments: at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak during -- once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please address the entire planning commission board. Are there any public comments at this time? Consent calendar: all items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the planning commission unless otherwise requested by an individual planning commissioner member for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Item 2A, posting of the agenda. Item 2B, approval of the agenda. Item 2C, approval of the minutes.
Number of approval.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Chair Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Bill Bedouin.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving over to a number three. Appears to be an appeal. And I'm going to call on Donna to give us a background, please.
Item 3.1, Dennis Montero, so, appeal of citations. The project description is: the project is an appeal of two administrative citations that were issued for grading without a permit. Property is located at the northwest corner of California and Claws, APN 132-046-078 and 079, and is zoned R1, single-family residential. The general plan designation for the site is LDR, low-density residential.
Okay, then at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we've got a...
I was just reading the...
Oh.
The intro.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought you wanted me to read the intro.
Yes, absolutely, read the intro, and then we'll move to the PowerPoint.
Presentation, okay. All right, so the summary is: the project site consists of an approved vesting tentative map on two existing parcels of land, a combined 2.21 acres. Here's a photo of the project site location. You can see Claws off to the right and California Avenue at the bottom. The larger parcel is on the corner, and then there is a smaller parcel to the left of the existing house. This is a photo of the smaller of the two parcels. This is where the trucks entered the site. Staff at the time believed that this pile at the back was some vegetation that was scraped from the two lots. Here's from California Avenue, looking at the larger of the two parcels and the dirt that was brought in from Modesto. A second view of it. And a third view from Claws. So, staff had been driving into Riverbank from an off-site appointment and had come upon the trucks stacked up, or one of them parked or stopped on Claws and turning into California Avenue. And it was observed that the trucks were coming onsite and dumping their dirt. And there was a large dust cloud that was drifting across Claws about the same time. It was like 2:30-ish in the afternoon, and people were leaving the high school, both vehicles and pedestrians. And so, staff felt that it was an unsafe situation. There was no grading permit, there was no traffic plan, and there was no SWIP for the stormwater, the protection to keep the dirt from going into the drains should it rain. Therefore, the code enforcement officer, or the neighborhood improvement specialist, was dispatched to the site with the building inspector. And the public works superintendent ended up coming out to the site as well and stopping the activity, and directed the applicant to come to the development services department to get further instructions. Two citations were issued at that time, one for each of the lots. It was for $600 each, for a total of $1,200. And Mr. Montero is appealing those two citations.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any questions, and I see Mr. Montero is in the audience as well.
Okay. So, are there any questions for staff commissioners?
Not right now.
Was there anybody onsite other than the laborers with the trucks at that time? Did staff meet up with the owners or the agent for that property?
When it was first observed, there was no staff onsite. Actually, was driving by and saw the situation, and then came back to City Hall to determine if there was a grading permit or not. And then when it was found that there was no grading permit, that's when staff went onsite, met with the applicant, and...
So, the applicant was there?
Correct.
And met with staff?
Correct.
Okay.
And then later on, in the evening of the same day, I drove by on my way home from work and saw the applicant out in the street clearing up some dirt that had been tracked out.
And can you tell us what the regular procedure is for something like grading? What it is that the applicant should...
They would come in and apply for a grading permit. And as part of that permit process, there would be an application and a fee and a SWIP plan, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, would be submitted for approval. Is there anything else for the grading permit besides the SWIP, the fee and the application? Oh, and the traffic control plan? So, those would be reviewed by staff, and then the grading permit would be issued.
Any other questions?
Are there any... Oh, good. Are there any type of regulations that require grading and this traffic services that's needed when they're doing this particular type of work? Is there like a level of construction that requires it and a level that doesn't?
Correct. There is a section of the code that does address grading, and there is a minor and a major permit. And the major permit, let's see here, is for an area greater than one acre. And the two parcels combined is 2.21 acres. Therefore, we chose the major permit. And then the code, the grading section of the code, lists several definitions that staff used. One was clearing, which is the substantial removal of vegetation. The second was fill, which is the addition of earth material by mechanical equipment or other means. There is grading, which is the filling of a site. And so, those were the definitions that staff looked at before the citation was issued.
With citations, is one warned? Or is it just, once it's notified, or spotted, it's cited?
It's... I suppose staff has discretion, but in this case, because of the activity of the traffic and the pedestrians, it was seen as a hazardous situation, and so he was cited at that time, at that day. He actually, we... The neighborhood improvement officer issued the citations and sent, put them in the mail. And so, he didn't actually get them on that day, but when they went out to the site, they issued the stop work.
And everything got halted?
Correct.
No one in the neighborhood had filed a complaint or called to complain about it?
We did get a complaint at the office when we were checking to see if there was a grading permit. A phone call had come in from a motorcycle rider who was on California and hit some of the dirt and almost lost control of his bike. So, he called the city to complain.
I just have one little housekeeping problem here. You have two lots, so you issued two citations, but to determine the minor or major, you combined the two lots to come up? This is a question. So, is this what, how it was done?
Yes, correct.
So, they were combined for one purpose, to, for the permit-wise side?
Bless you.
But yet, it's deemed as two APNs?
Correct, correct.
And two citations versus one?
We issued citation for each parcel, and because the trucks were traveling back and forth between both parcels, they were combined together as one larger incident.
So, generally, what is the charge for a citation? Is it generally $600, or is that like a maximum? Or how did that number come about?
The 600 is the maximum, and it was issued because of the hazardous situation with the dust. There was no water truck onsite to bring the dust down. And if he would not have stopped, if we would have found him grading the next day, you can keep issuing citations for every day until he stops. But he did stop, and so the citation stopped.
So, if he was grading on the smaller parcel, would this be an issue?
Well, at the time, staff did feel that he was grading on the smaller of the parcel as well because a pile of debris was visible, and it was our understanding that the two lots had been, not graded, but stripped of vegetation and pushed into a pile.
So, now, at this point, we'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against item 3.1? Yes, could you please list your name and where you reside, please?
My name is Dennis Montero, and I'm the owner of the property, and I was in charge of the dirt situation. The two lots in question, that, those, that bundle of cover came from a project I have in Oakdale. There was no grading on the lot to the left, this right here. This came from Oakdale. And this gentleman, who is my tenant, who's been there, his name's Kurt Hamilton, he had Kurt Hamilton Trucking. And he would, he would get excess. He was doing a lot of pipelines for PG&E, and he would get road base at the end of the job. Instead of just throwing it away, he'd bring it into the site. Now, I'm going to take full responsibility, what I did, but I want, I want to give you my reasoning behind it. On the corner of the high school and Patters, Claws Road, there is a railroad, to the north of the railroad, there's a big pile in there. And that gentleman doesn't have a grading permit. People drive in there, they dump their rocks, bricks, any kind of trash in this soil. This soil, I was offered this dirt within 20, about 48 hours, and I had to make a decision, dirt or no dirt. And what I, what I did is, there was a big excavation in the almond orchards near Pallendale. And so, the gentleman said, you know, "You pay for the freight, and you get the dirt free." And dirt isn't free, you have to, I had to have somebody smooth it out, I had to have somebody. But no, no, no grading was done on the site. It was just brought in infill. And I want to back up a little bit. What happened is, I really didn't realize I was that low. I can't believe that I was that low. And my engineer, you know, he, we were in communication on the site, getting ready for the conditions of approval, which we, we had been approved like three and a half weeks earlier, four weeks, and we still haven't got it. But he did some calculations, and he said, you know, "Dan, you're, you're pretty low on that site." And I said, "What are you talking about?" And so, he, he ran the computerized, run a topo on that, and he said, "You're low. You're low substantial." And dirt today, and there's not that many projects going on where you can, you can get dirt. And I had an opportunity, I made the decision to do it, okay? But I didn't touch the other lot, and Kurt had a trucking business, he would bring me excess piles. If you look on the backside of that metal building right there, there's a couple piles, but the weeds have all grown over it. And at this point, I had approval for the 10 lots, but I didn't have anything done. So, it's like, if I owned the property and I wanted to dump a pile on my lot, I don't think that would have been against the law. And there was no grading done. We didn't have time to grade. I had to make this decision within 48 hours, or I was going to get no dirt. It was the end of the dig, and this guy says, "Look, I'll work with you. We got to get rid of some excess dirt. You pay for the haul." Boom. So, it's not cheap. Nothing's cheap in development. So, Donna's right, under Riverbank's law, but I didn't have anything on that, on that other lot. And that, that pile right there came from Oakdale on Crane Road. I have a lot there, and I had excess. And so, soon as I get my grading permit, which I have paid all the proper fees, and a lot of you people are familiar with, small projects carry the blunt, they can't spread it over 40 lots. This is a small infill project that, it's going to be a nice addition to Riverbank. Riverbank hasn't had a lot of product built. And I'm here because I just think it's really unfair, because that gentleman has a gate there that he opens up for let people dump. And I brought in beautiful almond ground, came out of, near the mall, and so, I did do no grading. It doesn't make any sense to do any grading. What I had to do, we just, the trucks came in, they dumped, they went back out on California, they hit Claws, and went down to Briggsmore. So, I am guilty of violating, but I'm, in the essence, I created, I needed to make a decision, and I made the decision. I've done the wattle, I paid for all the waddle. Matter of fact, if you look at the property, you'll find that the waddle, right there, we have a, it's low, this, that's very low, and the waddle was kind of like window dressing. It, until you grade it off, that waddle will have to be moved out to the sidewalk. And so, that wasn't, you know, that was about a $1,400, $1,500 expense, just put the waddle around the dirt pile, which the water's never going to get to the gutter, it's only going to create a little pond there. And California hasn't rained in five years. So, what I'm saying to you is that I did it, Donna wanted it, so I got on it, had my engineer draw it, you know? It was very expensive to get it done in a day or so. But they did give me permission to bring the dirt in after I went down there. I had to go to Bill Cole, which is a city engineer, and Bill stated to me, he says, "You got to take advantage of those opportunities when you get them. There isn't that much construction, there isn't excess dirt. If you go buy dirt, it's very expensive to move." And so, I'm here tonight to basically say, the one lot, I don't believe I should have any responsibility on that, because that's my weeds that I brought from Oakdale. And the only reason I brought them here is the truck. We're going to wait till we get a lot of weeds to take them to the dump. That's another cost that you get when you have small projects. You have to be efficient. So, in a nutshell, that's my story. I know I did violate it, but, you know, I followed the lead of the guy on, on north of the railroad tracks, and he's got like 14 acres there, and he's, I'm bringing something to the city, he's not bringing nothing. He doesn't have a grading permit, nor does he have any kind, does he have permission? Does he not have permission? That's my point. So, I think in closing, and I appreciate your time, but I really did no grading whatsoever. I did bring in fill, and that's what I did. I'm guilty of that.
Okay, so I have a couple questions for you, Mr. Montero. So, you can say then, at no time ever was there a grading truck or whatever it is, a piece tractor or whatever, on that property?
There was, there was a skid loader, that what he did is, to get the trucks to create that pile, and what I wanted to do was create it so the dirt was in one area. We didn't even have time to scrape underneath the pile. So, when I get ready to grade this property, I'll have to clean the outside first. I'll have to take that dirt and spread it, and then I'll have to get into the middle of the property to, to get to that grass. And the way things are going, and the way the plan check, and way everything, it probably won't be done until spring at best. So, all that dirt, that's covering grass, that dirt right there, and it will have to be moved, and then I'll have to, to tear up that ground, compact it, and build it up to the level that the city requires. So, that's what happens.
Okay, so, basically, you're saying that filled dirt came in, but the only movement with that filled dirt, once it was there, was to move it to a certain location, but not to grade the property, is that correct?
Correct, because we don't, we don't have final calculations, because, you know, that's a lot of, that has to do with calculations. These are big lots, and you have to drain from the back of your property to the outside, and those computations are not done yet, because they now have, they now have this dirt, and now they, they re-topo it and say, "Dan, you, you need to spread it, you know, six inches here, and maybe 18 inches in the back, so that drainage goes out."
So, really, you're saying that the property isn't even ready for grading, that you're just bringing the filled dirt in?
That was all I did. There was no grading whatsoever. The skid loader was just to get the trucks over the hill. They would come in, dump at the hill, and go out, and they would get stuck, because it's soft sandy loam material, and then they'd push them, push them through, and that's all.
And you did have permission to bring the dirt in?
I did not.
You did not? Well, you got permission...
I got, after I came down to the city, the city engineer, I don't know, Mr. Martin, is that his name?
Bill Cole?
Not Bill, the other gentleman that I went down to. You were gone at a seminar.
Eater?
No, the guy that works in that building over there by the...
Oh, Road Superintendent Michael Redell?
Yes. He said, "Stop." I cut the trucks off, I cut everything off, I came back in. We got a hold of Bill. Bill was notified that, that I, what I was doing, he basically said, "They let me finish. I had one more day. I had one more day from my pit." And he, and so, he granted me permission to do that, provided that I bring a waddles around the property and do the proper thing, get the, you know, get the street cleaned, which I did. She saw me physically. I cleaned that street myself with a couple other guys, and so, I didn't want to have any impact, you know? I'm trying to do business in Riverbank, so I don't want to get everybody upset with me. But this was just a numbers game, it wasn't trying to power through something here. I just didn't realize how much dirt I needed, and I couldn't believe that that little site would demand that kind of dirt. So, that's what I did.
To, to help you with the timing, the dirt was brought in on September 22nd and 23rd. It was about two weeks later that the waddle was placed around it, and then he came in to apply for a grading permit on November 10th.
The reason the waddle was put on two weeks later is because we were told that we needed to get Bill's approval and Donna's approval. Donna relayed to Bill that he wanted Bill's approval. So, we had to, we had to go and get a formal plan submitted. It took us a day and a half after the material was there to put the waddle on. That wasn't the issue. But I wasn't going to put the waddle until I got Bill Cole's signature saying, "This is okay." And that's, originally, you know, you typically put it up the sidewalk, but I have such a drop-off there, it would be a little pond where the waddle is there, and it would, it would have to be a tremendous rainstorm to get over the top of that to go out into the gutter. I'm probably as low as 14 inches from the curb. I mean, not the curb, the back of the sidewalk. And I've got to be higher than that to get that water from the back of my lot out. So, and it, you know, I appreciate what Donna's saying, and I'm just saying, my view is, I saw a gentleman who has a site, people are driving in there and dumping, and I basically followed that lead, and I didn't have the luxury of any time. I was going to lose the dirt. He was going to shut the, his dig down, and I was fortunate enough to get the dirt. So, that's what I'm here for. And I thank, I thank the planning commission, and I thank people for their time.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Another, can you back up on the photo? I want to go to the smaller lot. Okay. So, you said this is stuff that came from Oakdale, right?
Can I go over there for a second, show you? Yeah. There is a, it was a loose...
The pile of stuff back there is from Oakdale?
Yeah.
He's talking about this as being logged in from Oakdale.
Okay.
A dump site.
Okay, so, that's, so, you're going to develop this, is that your plan?
I have to bring in Matthews all the way down. Where that...
I'm just saying, this little area here, all that's going to be developed at one point?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, now we can go back to, go up forward a couple? Right here? Okay, so, when the dirt, they just bring it in and dumping it off, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we can go to the next photo? And so, this is what it looks like, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go to the next one. So, how did it get like that?
This is the side on Claws, and this is from California. So, this is the bottom part of the pile.
So, you have a pile that's like this?
This is the side of the pile.
And the pile is locked up? Okay. And there's, so, when something's graded, what, what happens? Is it just flattened out? Is that what we're talking about, grading? Just basic, is grading just, pretty much just flattening something?
Once, once the engineered plans are stamped, then we have to go in there, and we, we've got to build a base, and then we come up every four...
This will be flat?
Yes, sir. That was the whole objective, is to, a small project having that much dirt, which is, still boggles my mind.
And then, so, what happened was, you just had to get the dirt? Because you, you running out of time, because you just had to get the dirt, because it was at, you know, it was to your best interest to get it?
Well, I got the dirt free. Normally, you have to pay for dirt plus hauling. Normally you have to pay for dirt plus hauling. And so I made a deal with the trucker, hey, let's go.
Let's go get it. And then he brought it in, dropped it off and drop off already, okay.
And since then, you said all the grading permits have been paid and so on and so forth?
Everything's into the city. All the fees have been paid. We're waiting, we're waiting for them to review the documents. And then I would have permission to get, I'd go pick up my grading permit. This lady's helping me at the city. And basically where we're at right now is that I have to get all my improvement plans done. And that's going to take, we're hoping to shoot for November, in November to have the drawings into Bill. And then Bill said he's going to take at least a month to plan check it. So the way things happen is that you're going to be, we're going to be in December. So nothing happens in December. So, and hopefully we'll get a lot more rain. And so I probably won't kick this off until if February dries up a little bit, maybe I can get in there and start. Because there's a big sewer line that has to go on California. And we're kind of waiting for this gentleman who has the large apartment deal to kind of lead us to the finish line on that area.
So what is it then in your appeal that you're asking for? For the fines to be removed or reduced?
I want them...
The citations to be removed?
I believe that they should be eliminated because of two things. One lot in particular should not be in consideration because there's really nothing there. And you guys, I think you live locally, you can drive by and see. It's just a pile that came out of my project in, you know, when you hire a truck and you hire a guy loading it, why not make it a full load? It just costs you the same amount as a half a load. And I did no grading whatsoever. Underneath that hill or that dirt pile, there is grass, just like you see on the front side here. So that all has to be removed and scraped off. And then, and you go down about eight to 12 inches, you dig it up, then you put water on it and you start lifting it up with four inch and five inch lifts. And then you get it back to the engineer specs, which will be, City of Riverbank will have to bless and stamp. And then you'll have a finished grade.
Any more questions for the developer?
I just have one question. Do we need a permit to bring the dirt in? Is there a permit that they have to get for that also?
We'd still need a grading permit because you need your traffic control and you want to make sure that the water truck is there and you have your SWIP in place. Part of the problem was, it was very windy that day and this dirt needs water applied to it to keep it from blowing. I'd still like to refer to the city code definitions where grading is the filling of a site. And fill is the addition of earth material by a mechanical equipment. So based on the definitions in our code, it is considered grading.
I want to, but before he can bring a truckload of dirt in, he needs a permit for that? In addition to a grading permit, you need to have a bring dirt in permit?
No, 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 it's just handled under one permit.
Okay, and is there, since time was of the essence, is there some way that he could have called on an emergency basis and obtained like a rush permit?
It's possible. I can't speak for the city engineer who would be reviewing and issuing that permit. But we do try to be business friendly and we do try to work with developers and we were not contacted ahead of time. A grading permit could be issued for a site. That would include bringing in dirt material. It could also include the actual digging in the ground to create those lots. It could all be handled underneath one permit.
And how long does that usually take, one of those permits to obtain?
Well, it probably depends. They have to submit their traffic control plan, their SWIPs plan, and then, you know, fill out the whole application. It has to be reviewed by the city engineer.
So weeks, a month?
It could be a week or so.
So I guess, you know...
It looks like Bill Cole, the city engineer, did look at it on an emergency basis and allow him to...
And allowed him to?
Complete.
To complete it. And did he recognize that there was no grading as well? It was just actually just bringing the dirt in? I mean, otherwise you wouldn't have probably got permission, is that so or?
That part, I didn't discuss that part with Bill.
You didn't discuss with him, okay. But you did get permission to finish what you were doing?
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay, very good. Any other questions for this gentleman? Okay?
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item 3.1?
Charles Neal, 2312 Rio Verde Drive, Riverbank, California.
Okay.
The first objection that I have, and it should be somewhere in the city ordinance, is for him to bring material from someplace else and dump it on a lot. I mean, you know, that's not a dump site. And that's material that's coming from someplace else. Second, it doesn't take that long to get a grading permit in the City of Riverbank. And it seems like he's pretty familiar with Bill Cole. So evidently he's used Bill Cole or knows Bill Cole as a city engineer. And a lot of...